I will call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
Let's lead him to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Galloping?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. And citizen comments, if anybody would like to speak to the council, we have none. We have no public hearings tonight, we have reading and approval of minutes for May tenth regular meeting.
I'll move approval of the May tenth regular meeting minutes.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have the same May tenth condensed version.
I'll move approval of the May tenth condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Oh council, I just wanted to point out that you have a new agenda. Maybe you all got it already. It added a B under ordinances and resolutions. And it was emailed this afternoon. Okay, we have the consent agenda.
Do we need to approve that mayor?
No.
That addition?
Uh, I don't think so.
No, it was already there, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha, alright.
Consent agenda consists of the audit of city bills, the application for exempt permit from the Lions, gambling reports from the Legion, and the Eagles. I think, yeah. And the April twentieth tree board minutes. I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions on any of the items?
I just had a question, is it, is it, do we have to see the gambling reports every, every time?
That is actually part of, I believe that's part of the state gambling laws. Because, because they're... The city actually has something to do with granting the license, so they have to come through the city.
It has to go through the council, huh? That's interesting.
Well, this is kind of a checks and balance system more than anything, I think, right?
Yeah.
Gives us a, you know, set of eyes on it.
Gives us an idea of what's going on there.
Yep, I think it's a good idea. I just had a question online, item forty-five, the fire department, I see they bought four sets of turnout gear, was ten thousand, four seventy-five. Was that a budgeted item lane, or how does that purchase work?
Yeah, we buy them every year. Actually, this, the, uh, actually, I don't know if it's gonna be on this one, no. They actually bought six sets, but there's, two of them were from last year because of the timing on the purchase and how accounting works, but yeah, we, every year we budget money for turnout gear.
Okay.
Try to keep them up to date.
Okay, thank you.
Good, any other comments or questions? All in, those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. We have petitions and requests and communications, a application for Sunday liquor and on sale liquor for Prime Steakhouse.
I'll move approval of the twenty, or the Prime Steakhouse liquor license for twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
And that includes that they need to have the insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Resolution ratifying the emergency purchase of two generators for the Minnesota DNR.
Yeah, so one of the, and I don't know if we've ever really talked about emergency powers and stuff like that during disasters and things, but one of the things that happened during this storm was that our generator at the sanitary sewer lift station actually burned out. And they're having problems with it, and so it'll be replaced through insurance, but when that goes down, what happens is then we have to pump wastewater into the river. That's the way it works, when the power goes out and our lift stations aren't able to pump out their pits, then, then we bypass that and we, we run pumps and pump it into the storm sewer system, which we're allowed to do under the rules in, in the state of Minnesota, MPCA. And, and so it was something, actually, we anticipated the issue of the lift stations and needing to have power to be able to pump them. And so in the budget for two thousand twenty-two was actually a generator, a portable generator for the wastewater system, about fifty-six thousand dollars worth of generator. And the idea was we're gonna put that on a trailer and be able to haul it to the different places. Last year, we actually had the, the lift stations wired correctly so that they would all be consistent, so that we could utilize a generator. And during our discussions about what was going on with the power being out, what we realized that actually Donley had one of these generators, that the fire department in Donley had picked one up from the Department of National Resources, so actually Brad's fire chief over there, and they didn't need it. And so they brought it over to the city, and actually, right now, I believe that was gonna get set up to be utilized at our wastewater treatment plant until these new generators come. They were supposed to come on Friday, and, and I don't, something happened with the transportation from the DNR, and I, I don't know if they're here yet or not. But one of the things that we've actually done in the past here at the city is we picked up army surplus equipment. We actually have a fire truck that was picked up as part of army surplus equipment, and that was redone for utilizing in, in the fire department as a water truck. But, you know, we, we can do this, they're, they're very low cost, and as you, as I indicated in here, we're talking about a thirty KW generator that we would trailer mount, and then we'd be able to bring them around to the lift stations to be able to pump. And actually, what we're doing is looking to see if they have additional ones that come available. And then a sixty KW generator that we could put at the wastewater plant. We will get our current generator fixed, and then the idea would be we'd have two of them. And so we'd have redundancy built in with generators at the wastewater plant. And the only caveat with these is if for some reason you don't need them in the future, you gotta give them back. Because that's the whole reason why they have them there as army surplus. And, and I know and understand, you know, being in, in the military and actually being part of that process on the other side, that typically, they, they had this equipment as extra stockage in case, you know, the, the country went to war, and they would sit in different places, sometimes in Germany, sometimes in, in bases in the United States. And then eventually, they would decide that they didn't need them anymore, and they'd make them available through channels to organizations like fire departments and communities. So, you know, the idea that we could get two of these coming to Morris right away was a good idea, I talked to the mayor about it, and we went ahead and did that, and I'm just asking you to ratify that, and then we'll continue to look at that. And then we probably won't have to purchase the one that we budgeted for, just because this is something that came up, you know, through the discussions that we had after the storm about what we need to do in the future to make sure we're ready for something like that, and, and it just seems like a really good idea.
Are they new then, like?
Uh, they're, they're not brand new, they're actually, they're older ones, but they have very few hours on them. Basically, these generators were started, maintained, and then they weren't really used for anything. You know, so the actual number of hours, I couldn't tell you, but for all intents and purposes, they're, they're almost brand new.
Okay.
That's usually the way that stockage is.
Okay.
When you said you have to give them back if you're not using them, is there like a certain amount of time of not using them, or what?
Um, sometimes there is, sometimes there isn't.
Okay.
But, you know, the goal would be, we're always gonna have them. I mean, that's the idea, that we would, we would, you know, like the one, and, and we would like to get a couple more. Because realistically, if we could have two, three of these, and then we could go set them over by the lift stations. There's a couple lift stations that are worse than the other ones as far as being inundated with wastewater, and so if you could have a generator, we actually talked last year internally about, you know, putting generators by lift stations, but one of the concerns I have is that they're just out there in the open then. You know, and the idea that, you know, somebody could come up and mess with them or whatever, if you trail or... Typically, we have time to be able to get to them, you know, and, and, you know, that nobody anticipated the power was gonna be out that long. You know, we've, we haven't been through that before, but, um, you know, it's just one of those things where, to, to me, this is a better way of doing it.
I'm assuming then there's probably no warranty on them then, or we're on it, we kinda go it alone if there's a, say that we get it and then something goes wrong with it?
Yeah, for the amount of money you're paying, you'd probably just get another one. I mean, that's, you're not gonna spend a lot of money fixing something. And then I, you know, I'm, we haven't even looked at, you know, do we have to put them on our insurance?
Yeah.
You know, to cover them, because the other one was on the insurance and it was covered. On the plus side, you know, we had that great big huge generator at the water treatment plant, when that thing kicked in, you know, it just, we, we didn't skip a beat with the water plant.
Yeah, and I, I know what I paid for my little Honda Impreza, so I, I agree, I think the price is, is makes sense. Even if we have to spend a little bit on repairs, I think we're still money ahead.
Yep.
What, what happened to the one out at the wastewater then?
Uh, it had a problem, it, it overheated. There, it was having a problem overheating, and, and they, they, they had checked on it and thought they had the problem solved with it, but it was, it just wound up running hot, you know, and so, you know, one of the things that we talked about is do you position somebody by a generator and sit and watch it hour after hour after hour? You know, um, yeah, it was just kind of a fluke thing, because they're diesel generators and they're usually pretty reliable, but...
Right.
That's what, something happened, it overheated.
Do they run them every so often?
Typically, they do, to test them.
Yeah, you should, you should run them, you know, so that's, that's the problem, sometimes they don't run them for long periods of time, and then, and you have problems with it.
Yeah, because this one was running for, for quite a while, and then, like I said, they actually knew that there was an issue with it overheating, and Brad had been out there a couple times looking at it. And then, and then, like I said, if somebody would have been standing there watching it the whole time, they probably would have been able to shut it down. But then, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna wind up in the same position anyway, it's not gonna be used, and, you know...
No, yeah.
Is it something that's repairable then, that if we ever had that situation, or would that just happen again?
Yeah, no, it'll get, it'll get repaired, yeah.
And then it'll be fine, it's like an overheating?
So the engine blew up, basically, so now they gotta replace the engine on it. You know, and, and, you know, they haven't, I don't think they've decided if they're gonna come and get it and bring it up to the, the caterpillar place to get it fixed, or if they can come down and replace it right on site. We're going into summer, so the weather tends to be better, better in the summertime.
Alright.
Well, I'll move on the resolution ratifying the emergency purchase of the two generators.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Galloping?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And the other resolution that we added was, I actually was contacted by the, the company that does the concrete cutting and wanted to know what we're gonna do for this year, and we budgeted fifty thousand dollars to do more concrete cutting. And, uh, so they went and surveyed, the east side's pretty much done, went over on the west side, and actually, the packet that you got, there's a colored picture in there, you can see that there's quite a few spots, you know, but as, as we know, you know, they've done this before, and I think what we identified about eight hundred and twenty-two spots that they're gonna come in and do, and, and they're, they're filling up, their schedule's filling up now, and that's why I added it to the agenda instead of waiting until the next council meeting. But, okay, man, this is fifty thousand dollars worth of work, this is what it looks like, and we're almost done.
Isn't that amazing, you budget fifty thousand and make a million fifty thousand?
Well, but that's, you know, that, but that's...
How does that work?
I don't know.
No.
That's kinda nutty to me.
No. You know, what I, what I, what I, I mean, they're very good, I mean, you can literally see exactly what each one of these costs, because that's the way they do it, but, you know, we didn't, we didn't wanna have them go out and inspect, you know, everything else and come up with seventy-five thousand dollars, and then we'd have to figure out what we're gonna cut out of it.
Should've told them you only had thirty.
Yeah, well, I think he would've, I, you know, they do, they do a really good job.
So compared to the east side?
Well, that's similar to what we paid last year, I think, wasn't it?
Well, yeah, compared to the east side, how many spots are they fixing on the west side now?
Well, this, I think the last one that we did was eight hundred and thirty-some.
So about the same.
So it was pretty consistent as far as money-wise, you know, but, and as far as what they're finding, but, you know, I'm just amazed that, you know, I've actually had people comment to me that, you know, whether it's riding their snowboard or somebody that's, you know, you know, got somebody in a wheelchair that they're wheeling down the street, you know, because these are handicapped accessible, you know, you guys had that discussion, I had a chance to watch the video of it about handicapped accessibility, and just think of all these little cracks that we've, we fixed in, in all these sidewalks and stuff. So it's kinda, it's a unique thing that I'm kinda glad that we got, got a chance to bring it into town and start working with it. And this, this is, I think there's just a little bit left after this is done. And then in the future, you know, we could have them come and take a look at, you know, just whether or not anything changes. We know concrete shifts around here in, in the wintertime. So I'm recommending that we go ahead and do that, and then we'll get them on the schedule and they'll come in and take care of that.
Well, I'll move on that resolution, accepting a proposal from Precision Concrete Cutting for Project Area Number Three Sidewalk Maintenance.
I'll second that, any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Solby?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Galloping?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Um, city manager's report and recommendation.
Yeah, it's been a busy, busy couple weeks here. And I won't go through all this, so if you have specific questions, I'll, I'll ask that at the end. But just a couple things upfront, I think the storm response from everybody was awesome, starting with Donna Greiner and, and the, the emergency management team at the, at the county. You know, this, this was the number one thing that I thought that we'd be dealing with as a city when we did all of our emergency management planning. It was gonna be a windstorm with, with high winds that are gonna, was gonna take off trees, probably not a tornado, but it was definitely gonna be a windstorm, and that's exactly what we got. And I, I think everybody was pretty surprised at the extent of it, just because we didn't expect to have power go out as extensive as it was, and, and yet, at the same time, I think everybody responded very well, the public responded very well. Obviously, the employees at Workforce responded very well. The first night, we had to get trees off the street, you know, so that people could move around, but then there's power in the trees, so they had to leave them, so they put up roadblocks and stuff to keep people out, yet at the same time, the next day, it was like, it was parade day in Morris. So everybody came to town and had to drive around and look. I know in my neighborhood, it was just car after car after car coming through, they had to take a look at it, and, and I don't think you ever stopped that. But, but, you know, we were a little bit worried about how that was gonna be, trying to take stuff out, and so one of the decisions that we talked about was just have everybody put everything on the boulevard, and then we'll get a chance to come back and get it, and I think that was a good decision. Few people didn't like that, few people did their own thing to include, I know I talked to Troy Ingerbretson, somebody literally drug a tree down the road behind a pickup truck into the landfill, to the pile. Didn't cut it up, nothing, just drug the tree, and, and so you do have some things like that happen, but, um, but, you know, and now we're cleaning up, and, you know, we're, we're just finishing up the boulevard work, and then we have to get into our trees that we have on, on our boulevards. And then, one of the things I was just mentioning here just a little bit earlier, but it appears we're just waiting for the insurance company to give us a thumbs up that we can hire a vendor or two to do our trees in our parks, and that might be a better option for us. So we did get some quotes from tree vendors, and as soon as they give us the thumbs up, then we'll, we'll award that to them, and they'll come in and they'll clean up those trees, and then we can focus on the boulevards and, and the other things that we need to do. We, we did a pretty good job, I think, of going around and finding all the damage, and we did have a number of damaged things, fire hall roof, wastewater plant roof, we had the generator went out, the airport got hit really hard. So the main, main hangar next to the rival departure building needs to be dealt with. I think we had twelve trees down at the airport overall, I gave you a report, and I, I, I'm not gonna go through it. But the one thing I, the one thing I will tell you as a city manager, we need to have a discussion moving forward about what we're doing with trees. Because there's two things that we're doing with trees that has to be corrected. One of them is we're leaving trees that are not good quality trees, and we went around, we looked and identified, there's a number of them. Obviously, here in this storm, because of the saturation of the pine trees and, and the ground, a lot of the damage was pine trees falling over. You know, my neighbor behind me had a great big huge one that luckily it blew over into an open field, but, you know, they blew onto buildings and stuff like that. The other thing is, one of the things I did, I drove around town twice, first to look at all of our properties, second to look at all the boulevards and stuff, but if you drive around town, you'll see where the power lines are. And just take a look down the power lines, and what you're gonna see is stuff underneath them. And so one of the things that we should not be doing moving forward is planting one tree under a power line or allowing trees within probably, I would say probably ten feet on either side of a power line. And so one of the things I'll be recommending is a project, I don't know how, you know, we might have to look at some funding. I did talk to Dennis Ketterling from Otter Tail Power. We need to have a concerted project to get all that vegetation out from these power lines, because they're in the power lines. It's not like there's bushes underneath them, they're in the power lines still. And, and that was part of the problem that we had was, you know, trees were falling, trees were... We actually had a fire that started behind our, like, four doors down from my house, behind a neighbor's house, because their tree is in the power line, the, the power lines took out the electricity and then started a little fire that they had to come and they had to cut the branches out of the power line to get the power back up. But that is something that we need to do moving forward, I mean, and we'll, we'll start a process of having that discussion.
Lane, as far as the, the trees that have been planted there though, isn't it Otter Tail to trim those up?
Um...
I mean, we've called and, and we've always like, yeah, they'll get around to it, but we had, we took down seven trees that were in the way, and then asked them to trim. So I mean, part of that too is, and maybe this is kind of their eye-opener too, that if there are trees there, they were some, they, they wouldn't let us trim them. They wanted to trim them themselves.
Because of the...
Right.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I get going forward some of these things, but as far as, you know, and like I said, no one expected that, and maybe that'll be a higher priority for them too, once this is all said and done, but...
Well, I, I think, I think you're, you're right, but then there's also, because I was involved with one, one set of trees, there's a pushback from the public, they don't want their trees cut. You know, and, and it, and everybody's been out on highways and seen where power companies have come through and taken half a tree, which makes no sense to me whatsoever, you know, it's the stupidest thing you could see. But I think it's a combination of, you know, letting everybody know that this is something that needs to happen, whether or not they have the resources to be able to do it, maybe there's some additional resources that we can find to, to help them with it. But it, um, that's what we have to look at, you know, what is the best way to approach that? You know, because I, like I said, I know there's been some pushback from people not wanting them to come in and cut trees, and yet at the same time, there's people planting trees. We've planted trees underneath power lines, you know, and the idea that, yeah, you can find smaller trees to put underneath power lines that aren't gonna grow up into the power lines, it's like, but at the same time, why would we do that? Because they have to get in there and do maintenance on, you know, that's one of the big things too, is when you watch them trying to get power put back on, there's a lot of issues with that. But I think there's a lot of discussion that can take place in that, because the next storm could be three weeks from now.
Well, from a safety standpoint too, we don't wanna encourage people out there cutting trees down, because somebody's gonna get hurt.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's a delicate issue you, you're talking about, Wayne.
When we're talking about smaller trees or something like that, it, you know, it's like, weren't the trees down Main Street supposed to be smaller trees too? And they got pretty big. So I think, I think it's, to your point, I think that, you know, nothing under the, under the lines, and at least ten or twenty feet on either side, because they are gonna branch out at least ten to twenty feet. But I mean, you're right, I mean, there's, there's a lot, and it could've been worse, you could've knocked down a pole, hit your house, burned it right to the ground, it could've been it.
Right.
You know, I mean, I, I get that we need to worry about our trees, but I think those are the hazards that we have to take care of. That's public safety over the top of, of, of the trees.
I mean, that, we know that we're gonna have windstorms, but, you know, and it's taken out, you know, literally, people ripped their power right off their house. So electricians had to come back and, and redo the whole power system, but that's, that's one of the big takeaways I had, and we don't need to try to solve that, because we're gonna have to step back and take a look and talk to all the people that are responsible for that stuff. So storm-wise, we are, you know, we're, we're, we're getting everything kind of figured out the way we need to take care of it, and we'll continue to give updates on that and everything, so I don't know if, if you don't have any questions about anything else on that. I can just give you a couple more updates here quick. Legislature finished, they didn't do their job. So there's no additional LGA, there's no, you know, we were looking at all different kinds of things that potentially could've happened. There was talk about some pub, Reggie and I've been talking about public safety money, because they're talking about money for recruiting police officers, hiring police officers, all that kind of stuff. I have no idea if they're gonna do a, a special session to try to fix that. We're, we're okay, LGA is fine, because the state budget has our money in it. But the only other thing that, we did, we did have two items in there dealing with sustainability. Chris Watkins left and went to work for the Department of Commerce, but we still had some money left over to hire a sustainability project coordinator. Legislation was passed, it's gonna be signed by the governor to extend that money for another year. We have about fifty thousand dollars left, which was about enough for a year's worth of time. But we also received a new grant, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars under the LCCMR program to continue that on. So that was approved, that's gambling money, it's not part of the normal process, and it was all approved, and, and it'll be signed by the governor, so we'll get that grant application. So we will have a sustainability project coordinator coming on here in, in June to start working on some of our projects. And, and so that was kind of nice that they actually did get that done, and, um, let's see, what else? We lost one solar panel on top of this building, that was it. Everything else is perfectly fine after the big win, and so they're gonna come and replace that for us. Any questions about anything?
Lane, I, I was reading through the tree board minutes, and I see that before Jim left, he put together the annual tree order. Now that we, of course, lost some trees, can we sit on that board, I think? Is the tree board gonna revisit that, and maybe by fall, probably might have to re-order some additional trees? I don't know how, what the process is, or is that something we should be talking about or not?
There's a budget for it, so they spend as much money that's in there for budgeted, but there, I mean, that's what's budgeted. There's a budget for it, so they spend as much money that's in there for budgeted, but there, I mean, that's what's budgeted.
Yeah, every year we buy trees, so then, you know, it's just gonna be a ma- matter of reallocating. The biggest issue is that, and actually today, they're planting trees. As far, we had a grant actually for additional trees, and they had to get those all planted so that we could get that grant finalized. But, you know, the big thing with trees is having time to be able to do it. You know, because it takes a lot of effort to be able to plant these trees. But that'll be the next step, is to figure out where we lost trees and where we wanna put trees. But I think before we do anything with that, we have to have a pretty good discussion on where we're putting trees and what kinda trees we're putting in. And, and, you know, one of the things that internally we're looking at is there, I used the word nasty, there's some nasty-looking trees out there. And why we keep them on the boulevard is beyond me. Because the one, the one thing I would tell you is that we dodged a bullet. And if you don't realize that, I will tell you, we dodged a bullet, there were no leaves on the trees. If there would have been leaves on the trees, we would have been having a totally different discussion. Because the pine trees had needles, and they caught the wind, and they got tipped over. But we still had trees that were damaged, you know, and, you know, I, I don't know if I gave you the, the count on how many damaged trees I found, but there's just damaged trees.
Sixty-eight.
Big, big, big pieces of them that were ripped off. And in some, some cases, they were good trees, in some cases, they were not good trees. You know, and then what do we do with them now? You know, do we leave them up there damaged with a big limb off? And so we have to take a look at that. But, but it, so I would say, no, we don't have to do anything different with our budget this year, because we're gonna have trees ordered next spring. And then the next step is to figure out where we're gonna put them. You know, because we did, we did have some trees down in parks, we had some trees down on boulevards. And it's just a constant process of keeping them updated.
Okay.
Yeah, they were actually planting thirty trees today.
Yep.
By the tennis courts and different areas, so lots of variety, lots of trees. A lot of people, yep.
Must have been fifty, sixty people, I think.
Good turnout.
Yeah, so any questions on anything else? I mean, we're working, working the problems.
Okay, any other questions for Blaine?
And you're working on the handicapped accessible parking thing?
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Okay.
I mean, it's like, there's certain priorities that we have right now, but, yeah. So I got that, I got that information that was handed, handed to you, and I started looking at it. And, and then I'll sit down with Mike Jacobson, and we'll take a look at, you know, you know, start with our property for one. But take a look at, you know, what our responsibility is and what we can do with the, the other things like the downtown area. Yep.
Fair enough.
Okay, any other business to come before the call? All right, meeting adjourned.